You want?
Here.
Boy.
Here. All right, I'm standing in the class. I declare the education student flag of the United States of America and to good public for which stands one nation under God, in the devil, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, the PHS student report.
This will recap my name is Jeff Malachi, three schools, senior class president, and I'm Mr. Counselor. All right, so we're gonna start off with our sports. Anthony Girado recently qualified for the Alpine skiing team, which was really, really exciting. And Dominic Mayhem just broke the school record for the hundred meter brush stroke, one minute and fifty. Right now, our winter sports are competitive cheer, girls and boys basketball, wrestling, and swim. What's currently going on in Brandon, and we have students need to apply for FASFA and scholarships. The sophomores need to complete their OSGC like signup forms. February sixth was the Flint Deep Program like night where they came in and they talked about what it is deep and why do it. And then February eighth was the FASFA workshop night where they kind of walked through, see, they say how to do FASFA, what it is, why is it important? And all that. And then February fifteenth was scheduling presentations. February twenty first is class promotion day. February twenty ninth was the eighth grade information night where you kind of get a feel of what high school is gonna be like next year. And I know that they come here to the high school and just see it and everything. We also have the high school homework help with math tutoring, that's with a couple teachers. And then we also have a brand in athletic athlete stuff where they come in after school and they can do training workouts with Mr. Johnson and through our school coaches. We also have honorary winner break coming up this weekend. It's February seventh, and then the online class signup ends March twenty sixth. And then as your council, I know there's no pictures on slide right now, so I have some pictures. So the first thing we have is obviously still coming was last week, we had our dances past Saturday, which was on the tenth. And we had our court performance in between the girls varsity basketball game and the guys varsity basketball game on Friday, the ninth. And then we had our pub assembly at the very end, who's they are this past Friday as well. And then this week is our sweet week, which we've now done for this, our third year doing it. Spirit Days are matchup Monday, which Brandon and I are currently matching right now. Tuesday is Teddy Bear Tuesday, which is just where you're pretty much. Thursday is Queen of Hearts, which are Wednesday is Queen of Hearts, Wednesday is Valentine's Day, which is just a red heart. And then Thursday is Dress to Impress and Friday is Relationships Day. And then the events that we have going on this week is starting today. We did a raffle for prizes, which is if you participate in Spirit Day, you can get a raffle every day. Dress up and keep your name in this raffle. On Friday, we'll pull a raffle ticket out and it's gonna be good, it burns some candy. And then we are selling roses at lunch on Valentine's Day, which is Wednesday. Then we're also doing candy grams like we used to in middle school. How do you give? Heart circle, we haven't done that since we were in school, so I'm ordering my bags this year, which I'm really excited to do. And so that's what's going on this week. And then the rest of the things we have going on through council is everyone just submitted all of our MASC, MHSA awards. We submitted a service project award, a Star School Award, a Word of Excellence. We did an unsung hero award, a student of honor award. And I believe those are all the awards we just submitted. So those are done and getting graded right now and invited by the MASC, MHSA members. Which is also very exciting. We're excited to get our scores back. And then we do have a blood drive this Thursday going on. And then we also have our state conference with MASC on from the twentieth to the twenty sixth. This is the next week, which we're also very, very excited about. It's what our council looks forward to every year. So we're preparing people for there too. And then the officers, me, Claire, and our two other officers went to a officer meeting in Curzily past last Thursday, which went very well. We talked to a bunch of other schools about teacher participation rate, snow company, recovery, there's senior activities. We got a lot of good insight on that. And then we also have some council applications open next year. Notice everything that's in council right now. And then here, a couple pictures in the corner are, you can see they're still coming. Emily Born, I'm Dory Rochelli. And then in the top right corner is a picture of me, Claire, and then our other officer. I'm working on awards that could get down. And then the bottom left corner is a picture of our juniors after the pub assembly with the sign they made. And then the bottom right corner is our conference game, attend this past week.
So are the candy grams for fundraiser?
No, they're just for sweet week.
Just for fun?
Yeah, so it'll go towards the council and probably the spirit trip that'll be at the event. If we make anything from it, I think we're selling two per dollar. And that's much probably gonna go into the money that we pay to buy the candy, so.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Nice to superintend report.
Well, I get to start the night off in a really super duper fun way. Don't mind if we head over to the podium. It's not often we get all the student of the year in the room. And so let's take a minute, please, and if the building principals of these individuals want me to come up and say a few words, they're welcome to do so. So I first like to recognize Mr. Jeff Malachi. Malachi is the recipient of District Eight American Teacher of the Year. And he is also now, his name is being moved on to the state level to determine if he will be the winner at the state level or the American Teacher of the Year. So Mr. Malachi, yeah, come on. For you and then something special in that. Do you want anything mom to share or anything?
Well, I, sure, that's. My mom always says, sure, fair speech. But I just would like to say that Dennis Hoffman, I know he's not here, submit my name and went with me and sat next to him, was just very gracious and everything. He's a wonderful person. I just wanna say thank you. And I also wanna say whoever submitted my name to Mr. Hoffman, thank you very much for doing so. I always, I thought they had the wrong Jeff, to be honest with you, when they, you know, maybe I was like, it's gotta be somebody else, but I, I'm very humble, thankful. And I, after I won it that day on Sunday, I came to the school, next day I had my head up high, had some swagger in my step, you know, was feeling good. And then I went and sat with Coy about figuring out who the secondary education teacher of the year is gonna be. And I read and saw Miss Jenny Geeselman's application and recommendation letter, and I was like, a long way to go. I gotta step it up a little bit. So rightfully so, she is the winner. That's awesome. So congratulations, you deserve it. And the last thing I know, I'm thinking too long, but I don't get addressed to board much in the community. I just wanted to say thank you so much. I feel just like wonderful to be here up here and talking to you, being a teacher at Brandon High School. I don't take it for granted. It's something that's very humbling and I feel very privileged. And I just wanna say thank you from the bottom of my heart to be a part of this community, to work with your students, to work with you. I don't take it for granted. Thank you. It's a privilege. Thank you.
They'll talk about holidays and the teacher of the year. I don't know, but thank you, Jeff, for bringing Black Hawk so down low. Okay, so we did something new this year because we often recognize an elementary teacher of the year and we recognize a secondary teacher of the year. Kristina said, come on, we're meeting preschool teachers too. And we went, you're right, you're absolutely right. And so our first ever preschool early childhood teacher of the year goes to Joanne Zatzen, who is a veteran. We love her here in Brandon. She's not allowed to leave. I know our family's not happy. I just saw that. I'm sitting right next to her, but we also appreciate her so very much. So Joanne, this is for you.
Brandon, yes, I have been here a very long time. Grace our children here. I am a true Black Hawk. My kids graduated from Brandon. I love Brandon and I feel very honored to receive this. I, I've worked with a lot of great colleagues to get me to this point. So thank you all very much.
You are a surprising Joanne because Sandra had the magic outfit up behind the scenes, but her family members weren't able to participate and surprised, but they were all in Zoom calls. And so Kristina pretended to be doing an observation in classrooms and then all of a sudden we walk in. I thought that was very fun. So thank you to her family for participating. That was really special too. Thank you. All right, so our next teacher of the year award is someone that has gotten double recognition over the past seven to eight days. This Brandy Bevel, who is a fantastic teacher over at Oakwood Elementary School. And I'm going to forget to surprise her as our elementary teacher of the year, but last week I got to go back again and enjoy and sneak in on a surprise to surprise her as the one hundred point three WNIC teacher of the week based on the nomination within the school. So she gets double accolades and she is obviously a fantastic staff member. And Stella, the daughter, who is a really tall first grader, came here to accompany her tonight, which is lovely to see Stella. So I excited to invite your mom up here. I can give this to her.
I didn't want to do it with everyone. I didn't work with wonderful colleagues and coaches along the way, and that's what's gotten me to where I am here today. I moved to this community after living in Oxford and Lake Orion, and now our kids go to Brandon. So I love it. Thank you. I greatly accept this. Thank you.
All right, last but not least, I would like to recognize our secondary teacher of the year. And Jeff, you took some of my words away. She truly is remarkable. And Jenny Geeselman fulfilled many different roles across the district decent, even as my son's been a great teacher during COVID, and she was exceptional then as well. So it's no surprise to me that Jenny, you were awarded this year as our secondary teacher of the year. If you don't mind, I'd love to be a part of the long.
Obviously, I love Brandon. I love you all. Like, this is a great place to like, my career has grown here, flourished here, and I really appreciate everything that Brandon has done for me to make it grow and become a brave person. I would have not done those five years alone.
Very fun surprise for Jenny as well because Coy had arranged for her husband to be on the phone with his family in Florida. And after we surprised her, we were getting ready to leave, she was, that's why my husband kept saying, have a great.
In the morning, there was a ton of snow and he kept on saying, have a great day. And I'm like, easy for you to say, you're a good.
Thank you, obviously, for your family and support. If you would like, you had to enjoy the rest of your evening, or you're obviously welcome to stay here and hang out with us. But if you have other things to do, we understand. And thank you again for all of your times and everything you've done for Brandon. Thank you.
All right, the next item I have as superintendent report includes the high school sun field trip. Dan, do you know? Love it. I'd like to introduce Sarah Moore, our high school teacher here, to talk about the high school sun field trip and about coming in lunch.
So I'm in math. These are the words with the ninth graders for the sun classes. And this is just the bridge competition trip that we do through MDOT every year. This year it's a little earlier. It's usually March. So they kind of had to speed up their process a little bit, but they all worked really hard. I mean, we were able to submit fifteen teams and all fifteen of them got in, which is really awesome. And this year, it's sort of late March eleventh, like back on March twelfth, just one day. It's gonna be at the Amway Grand in Grand Rapids. They're gonna present virtually here actually in February. So all they'll be doing there is like taking their bridges and having to do the whole breaking bridge process there and just getting their final competition results. And last year, we had, our teams got second and fourth in the competition. So we're hoping these two could.
How many teams did you send last year?
We had eighteen last year.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Kind of becoming tradition.
Yes.
Very nice. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you.
And then lastly, as a parent in the board, I'd like to invite Thomas Bead to come and share with the board some technology updates and information relative to the district.
Thanks for having me here. I'll get to give you a quick showcase of what's been going on in IT and what we have planned coming up for the future. Gonna go over our IT team and our caseload. So we did have some turnover, lost two texts. We were optimistic, thinking we could get by with two texts instead of three and be physically responsible, but it was too tough to keep it up. So proud to say we're up to three texts again. Mike just joined us. He's been here two months now, so he's doing great. Ricky's been here under a year now, and Ian is coming up around three meetings. But he's been here longer than I have. They are all doing fantastic. Cases, as you might expect, things get more complex every year, so does our caseload. So those have been going up, even though we've done some strategic things to reduce caseload in areas, like we'll cover a couple of these other slides, but evidently new things slot in, mixing things. So we're just gonna be working on just dealing with more and more complexity and more and more requests. So projects we've completed recently or somewhat recently, cameras, we're now up to about three hundred twenty-three active security cameras in the district. Making sure we're covered and safe and all that good stuff is going on. We got a security command center with a individual from premier who's watching over the district when the school core hours are in session. So she's been a really big, big help for especially other administrators in the district when they need to look up footage or just go over things. He's right there for them. Classroom technology, we're just wrapping that up with some final fixes, but that punch list is completed. So like these screens in here, we've got hundred and seventy-one other rooms in the district where this happened. So we're pretty proud of getting those in, revamping the room audio, microphones, cabling, docking stations, all that good stuff for the teachers. So we're in a good spot there. I don't have to replace any more projector phones. District Wi-Fi, we also upgraded our Wi-Fi, so that has been fantastic. We got a hundred and sixty-three new Wi-Fi access points, just increased our speed. I've had no issues with students testing like we had in previous. So that is a big need. Yeah, what the slide says, that helped significantly reduce our caseload in that area. So basically nothing related to the new access points come up. They've been fantastic. Other accomplishments, we just got new battery packs into the network closets. So as we have power dips as we're off to half here at Brandon, the phones will stay on and working. So that is good. Just working on getting those swapped out because the old ones are getting a little aged. So being proactive there. Another recent thing that came up, camera systems along with the security command center. We've got a lot better usability now with that. So when the security personnel need to look at a door, it's all easily accessible in the camera system. So let's say someone's talking about door five, they can hit a preset in the camera system. For example, the door five shows all the cameras that have coverage there so they can get eyes on something they need to get eyes on. And then email, Google and Yahoo and the big guys have been making security changes that we had to comply with. So we are keeping pace with them to keep our emails safe and our users safe. And now current and upcoming, public address systems. So we, thank you for approving the purchase of new public address systems. Those are going in. Last one to go in is high school, middle school, Harvey Swanson and Oakwood are installed. So new systems, kind of like the batteries, the old ones were getting very old, some of them around twenty years old. So now our new systems covered by warranty, anything goes wrong, it'll fix, working again. So, yeah. Good, the bell schedules are in there, no more archaic systems to schedule bells. So the front office will be happy with that. And a uniform interface between all of them. So people need to switch between buildings, they won't have to go through the system. Coming up next, the most major project is gonna be our firewall for the district. Our current one is going end of line, so we need to buy one of those. Luckily, federal E-rate program is going to pick up about seventy percent of that bill. So be a cover. Chromebooks, Chromebooks are coming. We've got HTS releasing a new generation, so I've held off to purchase until those are out, which are just trickling out now. So our next batch of Chromebooks will be the most current ones and we're targeting around three hundred or four hundred just to keep up with the old ones. They're failing and getting broken. And then also migrations and planning, working on getting us off of some older things like file shares here in the district. Moving stuff to Google, so everything's more accessible and less clunky. And then I'm gonna start on our technology planning. So ten year plan. Working on that to be more strategic instead of just reactive.
Thank you. Really appreciate that.
You're very welcome. Thanks, everybody.
He's the man behind the scenes, our sharing, you know, black hole. He helps me get that Google security authentication. So thank you for that.
We got a Zoom recently that itself. Okay, next up is approval of consent agenda.
The Brandon Board of Education approved the consent agenda that has been voted.
Before, any discussion? I got a little follow.
Jane?
Yes.
Or, yes. Hillary?
Yes.
Yes, Rebecca?
Yes. All right, information, discussion items, order work. I have a few things. I did, I did a ton of MASC and Michigan Association of School Boards virtual winter conference. I took several classes over two days virtually and covered a lot of finance. Maybe really appreciate Jane, because there's districts that do not have someone. There was a lot of good learning there. I also did a winter webinar, webinar series. It was really interesting. The first one was future of learning, the impact of AI. So it was talking about a lot of things, how districts are embracing it and what they're going to integrate it because. And then Jane and I did the governance regulation committee and they went over the governor's proposed budget that came out last week in legislative update. And then Carly and I attended the labor relations workshop last Friday at Meas King, Brownout, Coverers Learning. There was a lot of great information on the new legal requirements of our. So yeah, and we have. That's it. All right, next up is.
Jessica Flynn, gonna join me. For today, I just have some of these are some of the things that you're gonna see in slides. So just so you can see them up close if there's none. Can you note to me? Go back and look at me later. So tonight we wanted to update you on one of our many initiatives that we articulated to you that we're gonna be focusing on this year. And we decided that tonight would be a good night, midpoint of the year, to take a little bit of that account, the most comprehensive one, the initiative that touches really every single person in the district. And give you an update right now on our PDIS implementation of the year. So you can kind of feel for where we are and where we're going for the rest of the year.
And I freeze mode right now. Right, let me try it again here. Okay. All right, just someone here. You have the voice. Wow. I think we need some waiting to. Fair. It's like. Jan? Should be good. Is it not working for you?
No, but turn it on.
Turn, yeah, turn it on. I did a test this afternoon with like everything. Well, just you can, you wanna tell me and I can move it.
Just give a magic touch. It doesn't like me.
Oops, try it again. Go back. Now try it.
Now it's working. There we go. All right. All right, here we go.
Now it's working, there we go, alright, alright, here we go. Alright, so just this evening, what are we gonna be sharing with you, so tonight we're just gonna share an overall timeline. Kind of bringing you up to speed where we are in February of twenty twenty-four, um then how it's going, some other facts that you've gotten some copies of. Plus some other things here in slideshow. Um how we're doing acknowledgements for both staff and students, you can see how that's kind of looking at each of the buildings. Um we've got a section on student voices and how students are really being a part of the process. And then how we're using data to guide the work and how that's gonna be growing over the next um few months and years. And then our next steps beyond February through the end of this year, yeah, that. Okay, so this started um last June, when we were talking about launching this initiative for this year, so. The Harvey trade, when we met in August, we talked about this a little bit, so we were emailing back and forth as an admin team. We wanna go forward K twelve, same traits, let's do it, so everyone adopted the Hawk traits. Um so we were able to this summer get work going, make banners um with the Hawk traits for every building. And then in August, we provided the um whole district live kickoff with open schools consultants to talk about P D I S. So every single person in the district would have a baseline understanding of this initiative and their part in it. Um September through November, each building was developing um their matrix. So all of the matrices have been fully developed at this point, which we'll go into what that um looks like. We also completed um the tiered fidelity inventory, which is um. Another baseline data point with how are we doing so far with our team composition? You know, do we have all members on the team that we need, are we implementing with fidelity? So this was a good, and it's not a judgment piece, it's really data for us to move forward, where do we need to move forward with this work? Do we need to include community members, more student voice on our committee? So all of those have been completed, I think I've included most of those in my board notes, so you may have seen snapshots of those already. Um the student risk screening scale, the S R S S, was completed in October. And you might be thinking, well, that's not P D I S, but really all of this ties together. Because we're looking at that as another data point, so if we see students struggling with certain. External internal factors, then we can bump our P D I S lessons and connect that to the Hawk traits. So it's really nice to connect all of our initiatives and efforts um looking forward. And then we agreed as a district to have lessons tied to the Hawk traits taught K twelve, two to three times a week in classrooms. Of course, this will look different in a kindergarten classroom and a third grade and a tenth grade classrooms, well, there's a lot of autonomy. Within the buildings to plan what's best fit for their students. And even between elementaries, they're not identical, they have different needs. So that's what's great about P D I S is it's not a canned program and there's so much autonomy within the building. As long as we stick to those many traits and use our data to guide our decisions forward. And also helping to keep that uniform across the district, we've really worked to get some common resources. Using the navigate three sixty lessons at all levels, to what extent they could be using them, um. Our elementaries and our middle school are all using the positive project to kind of keep things on the same page. And then the August meeting, this mid-year meeting you'll hear about today, and then the end of the year meeting. There's some room in between all of those, those dates for everybody to kind of go off and have some autonomy in their building and develop what. Is appropriate, makes sense for their own grade levels and their own populations, but then those midpoints or those, those checkpoints. Um is another opportunity to get everybody on the same page and keep the work moving collaboratively collectively, so. Which brings us to the last little stretch of time we had, November through January. Um they've all been working as a group of P D I S, um just the team members and principals and. Just the teachers at large in the district and the buildings to make sure that they've got all of the expectations being met. Across all of the environments in the buildings, which means taking those matrices. And then creating not just the general signage, but individual signage that speaks to each area, so you'll see examples of. Um signs for kids, what their behaviors look like on the bus, in the classroom, in the hallway, in different environments around the building. And then all of the things you see on those signs and the matrices are what they're teaching specifically. Based on what Jessica was saying, that data collected and just the noticing that they're having, so that's been something they've really been working on. In this last stretch between November and January. Also, what started to be developed is the acknowledgement system, both for staff and students, and you'll see examples of those as we go through our presentation tonight. And Jessica will dig a little bit more deeply into T F I results and talk a little bit more about that. Um we also discovered a really, really helpful feature in MyStar. Where there are specific reports that we can pull that are specific to P D I S. So I'll show you some examples of those, and we will show you those in the presentation tonight. Um those have been really helpful to have our own. Real-time data with the behaviors that are occurring in our buildings to look at and to make adjustments as needed. And then continue those Hawk lessons um and creating and developing them as well. And now in February, we are reconvening our teams, February twenty-third, we're having each building bring a. Not the whole team, but a portion of their team, two representatives and the building administrator. To come together so that they can share out with everyone, because right now they've been. Working in their buildings and not really having a lot of opportunity to share, so they'll bring everything, it'll be a share out and a plan forward. Um and an analysis of where they all are, so that we can kind of calibrate and then. Jump off from February through the end of the year to again have some autonomy in our buildings, but to keep on the same page with each other. The S R S S window, as Jessica mentioned, is opening, and then we are doing wifi again this year with seventh, ninth, and eleventh graders. This will be our second iteration of that assessment, it's a three-year assessment, survey for students. So we're going to be showing you some artifacts, some matrices, room-specific signage, acknowledgement systems, and the function that. So here's an example from Oakwood, so you can see the matrix that talks about the traits of top, every and other. Which is really helpful, so those Hawk traits are what really anchor the students in, so how do we have respect in the classroom, what does that look like? So the matrix really builds that out. Which is really helpful for students and staff actually, because the rule is the rule, so you can say this is, these are the Hawk traits on the class. You know, these are the Hawk traits at recess, your voice level may look different at recess than it does in the classrooms. So really defining that for students within those Hawk traits, so every building has their own matrix. Because the high school one, of course, looks different than an elementary one. And these are the area-specific signs, so you saw it in the very beginning, in August, we did have. The Hawk sign, which is that one of the little pieces of the top, just have respect, act responsibly, work together and keep safe. The gen- general, the generic signs across the district. And then these, this is an example of the specific. Signs that are generated in each building, so this is an example of the elementary classroom sign. You'll find um signs like that for bathroom, for hallway, bus, and other locations that are in their matrix. We can see the preschool one really is preschool appropriate, right, so like they can um. Get what they need to do in the earth, which has been really nice to have the preschool um jump on board. P D I S too, so students are getting that right away. We also have it developed um in many of the schools, a Hawk ticket and students are able to give. To one another in some buildings and teachers are able to give to students to really acknowledge specific Hawk traits that are the same. And they're used um in different ways to acknowledge kids in different ways, but the whole idea is to point out. When you are acting responsibly or you did have respect, so that it's getting acknowledged and then there's um. Some kind of recognition that you'll see some examples of as we go through. And this piece is so critical with P D I S, you know, it's not just saying like a good job ticket, you're really defining that. What did you do to show respect in the hallway? And so this alone really is an acknowledgement and reward, and then we thought upon this, not we, the principals, to kind of acknowledge further, but. I mean, students will keep these for years, you know, students will say, hey, you know, all my P D I S tickets from kindergarten, keep it great. Because it's so meaningful to them, so as we all keep maybe thinking about to others, right, it's that same kind of acknowledgement. So naming it, um just like we do with graded assignments, right, we point out that specifics will lead to that increased um positive behavior. And there are other fun ways to acknowledge students. This is one for preschool. Like Jessica, so we have a specific acknowledgement, not just saying a good job, defining exactly what. And then a whole standard. So that one, I do, they have that Hawk ticket, at the preschool, they don't, they don't get Hawk tickets like that, but they do have. It's a little, it's a different version, more age-appropriate.
The parents, yeah, a little one in the child's backpack kind of explaining what they did. And then the teachers share that with me, and I like to make my little videos to share on the newsletters once a month. Like a compilation of all of our little, our little Hawks.
But not only they get that internal, that intrinsic motivation, but it's fun to be celebrated in public too, right, so. In this one here on the left, you may have seen this um on the Harvey Facebook page, so all of the students get recognized. Um for being Hawk, is it monthly? So the monthly Hawk tickets, weekly, we, each teacher nominates a student class publicly, so we kind of have to. Which is great, so the Hawk drawings that are random, since more immediate, slightly, right, they're more random. So that's fantastic to really catch every student, so you don't have to be a straight A student to get the Hawk tickets or to be nominated. Um which is great, and then you can see the middle school, you may have seen they did a celebration, they did a Hawk ticket competition. Who had the most tickets, this was so controversial. It was, but, but all in good fun and celebrating the positive, right, I mean, a lot of good competition, so. The sixth graders won the competition, so they celebrated by having a uh pool party in our pool at the high school, which is the great use of our own resources. And they were so excited, you know, um.
That was the loudest I've ever heard before.
And it motivated the son of the new years, my son is like, I want that, you better talk to your friend. Get that word. And going, yeah, they stole that from us.
And finding what's important to that age group, right, so an actual recess might work at the elementary level, which is a great way to do something age-appropriate at the middle school. Uh and then a lot of our, um I think most of our principals are doing the staff shout-outs too, in the way to acknowledge. Um each other or colleagues, so um we either just do regular shout-outs or using the Hawk traits, so how have, how was your colleague shown responsibility? Or how do they work together, so that's been, everyone likes to be acknowledged, and especially it's powerful, like. You know, it's called student voice, yeah? Yeah, sorry. Um so at the high school, they've been doing, um as you heard with the student council updates, they've had a much bigger part of the P D I S planning this year. Than last year, which has been great, um so they've been planning Hawk time. And during that Hawk time, they're doing different activities, um focusing on. Not necessarily just the Hawk traits, but expanding that out, focusing on like kindness or what we can do for others, respecting other people. So a survey was sent out, um some of, some of these are the questions here, um what can we do to make you feel like you're belonging here? What's something you want your peers to know? And what's something you want your teachers to know, so here's just a sampling of some of the responses. Just good. Yeah, I think it was um eighty-eight percent reported that they feel like they belong. And then another way students are having voice, and just kind of reminding themselves every single day about what their Hawk traits are and their responsibility. To live like a Hawk while at school, um at Oakwood, they've got a, what are you guys calling it, a chant?
A pledge.
A little pledge, that's way better than chant. We have a pledge that they say every day, so we have a little quick video of some second graders, so you can see what their pledge sounds like.
Hi, my name is Lainey, I am Miss Power's second grade class, I opened up and use my pledge.
We are a family, we are a school family, we respect each other, I'm proud of each other, I have a black heart.
There's another way to have student voice, and then. Another preschool example of how they are expressing themselves, and to be themselves accountable for the Hawk traits.
And we, and we, we work together, we say, we are hot, we are a team, yes, we are, yes, we are.
So all of these things have been organically created just by the process of us launching into the P D I S work that we've done this year. We thought you might enjoy that, when we were thinking, what should we show?
You should put the video on, show it, yeah.
Another one here? They're way more fun than we are.
Our teacher of the year is right here. And then, of course, with P D I S, we recognize the positive, but it's not just the positive part, right? So we also are teaching students to reflect, to be responsible, and then this is powerful, to tie it back to the traits. So on these reflection forms from each elementary, um students are reflecting on, you know, what did they maybe not do in this instance? Or looking maybe next time to show respect on the playground or in the hallway, so just bringing it back again to our Hawks, so these are our traits. Um so that this is another way to just tie it all together. Now, we, yes, so um as Koi was sharing in MyStar, we had all these reports that we newly discovered. O D R stands for Office Discipline Referral there, so every time um teachers or administrators enter a discipline referral, it goes into the section. It's called P D I S, it's a lot of discipline data, which we can um link back to um our P D I S planning. So you can see this is a middle school sample, average O D Rs per day, referrals per day, so in September, three point three seven. Went up a little bit in October, went up in November quite a bit, and then it's back down in December. So this is just a great way to keep a pulse as a building, you know, what are, what are our day-to-day, what months are hot for us? And maybe something happened in November, maybe, I mean, so this, this is good for teams to really dig into as well. As well as the administrative team, was um, you know, November a high month for everybody, you know, was, so that's, that's important for us to know as we look district. Why in our planning, and there's many different graphs you can kind of pull out, you can track by student ethnicity, um disability. Really important data, rotation or location, so that when we're making a P D I S. If every incident is reported in the hallway, then we really should do some hallway assessments, right, with all the cafeteria. And this has also led to us taking the time as an administrative team to look at these reports and how we're entering the, the data output is only as good as the data input. And so that's something we're really looking into, so you know, we're getting data that will help us to do the things that, that Jessica's talking about as far as driving her P D I S forward. Okay, we mentioned a little bit the tiered fidelity and for you to T F I. Um the purpose is to provide a valid, reliable, efficient measure of the extent to which we're applying the core features of P D I S. It's divided into um three different tiers. For school-wide S W P D I S, tier one, universal, what are we doing for everybody within P D I S? Tier two is that targeted small group, and then tier three are those intensive supports, so we look at P D I S. Across that continuum, like we do for academic interventions as well. Um and the general rule, a score of seventy percent for each tier is accepted as a level of implementation that will result in improved student outcomes. And this is just a sampling, this one is from the high. And this is just a sampling. This one is from the high school. So this is looking at tier one, tier two, tier three, and then implementation across. So it's looking at teaming. The evaluation of systems, right, interventions, resources, support plan. And so this, um, we did with the open schools consultants who came out and led the teams through this process and it involved interviewing staff. Asking students, hey, what does the K stand for? Um, you know, on Hawk? And are they able to answer it correctly? Can staff answer it correctly? So do we really have full implementation? Are we just fidelity? And if not, that's okay. And that will just guide our, our next steps. This year, we just did the inventory once and we're not going to do it again this year, but we will do it again next year, possibly once, two times. To keep track of our progress. And then looking ahead, here are our plans going forward from here through the end of the year and um a little bit into next year. Just further analysis of the discipline data like I talked about, um, really intentionally connecting it to our PBIS. Teaching and learning theories going on in the buildings. So that, that's encompassing a lot of things, like I said, looking at the data input in order to. Really get the best data output and using that to drive what we're teaching and what kind of adjustments we're making. Um, utilizing the TFI. Again, next year to kind of see what kind of progress you've made from year to year. Um, the hawk traits are going to be here forever. They're continued teaching. It's not something that's a one and done. It's something that will continue to be developed. So when we get together in February, that'll be one of the things we share and to really talk about how have we worked. And to what degree in each building to develop your hawk traits and the lessons that you're using to teach them. And then what else needs to be done to make that more robust and um just more um. Complete, I guess, for each of the things that we're trying to teach. Um, increasing the student involvement and the engagement. We started that. We showed you a lot of examples of how we're acknowledging students and how they can get recognized. And kind of some celebrations, but that's, that's just the beginning. They've got a lot of creative ideas that haven't really launched yet. They were talking to Colleen about something specific she's got going for Oakwood and having peer-to-peer kind of supports going on. Um, just to have time to develop those things and to, to make all of those pieces. Um, more strongly implemented is another part of what we'll be doing when we meet in February. And then using that SRSS and my five data, it's, it's amazing to, to collect it, but really u- utilizing it along with the other PBIS. Data that we're collecting in order to um. Just look at our planning and assess what our next specific steps are. And then, like I said, we've got that February meeting and then again, we'll do it in June as an end of the year wrap-up. And at that point, how are we kicking off the fall of twenty twenty-four? And what does that look like as we go into the next school year to grow this initiative even more than we have this year? And we'll be with humans back towards the view too, which as we're tracking suspensions across the district, we expect to see a decrease with um. So we are Brandon. I am a Black Hawk and that is our presentation on where we are with PBIS this time. And yeah. No, it's hard to nail it down to exactly what specific things, but there's so many things going on. There's a lot of moving parts in these, so we hope this is indicated, but just.
One question. Do you remind me, do you carry set the results from that my five with the learning goals you need to know?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then, um, I wanted to say that the hawk, like certificates and all of that, I've been talked about, it's coming home, at least in our household. So thank you.
The one picture right above the baby, with that adorable baby staring at its big sister reading a book, you get into the background. You can see our hawk inside the nets at um the library.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So it's, it's making its way out into the pub. I really showed that, shared that picture with me and I found it on Facebook. So. You can see that. I'm glad to hear it's coming into your, your houses, but it's also out there in the community and we're starting to see that into the.
Do you, have you seen any decline out of behavior or discipline debate or because of, I know it's kind of early.
But didn't look at that. So there um hasn't been like a significant decline at this point. So we left that out. So we hope for a turn up in that in June. And so I'm really looking at, you know, K five, separating out K five, middle school, high school. Um, so right now, we're, we are similar to where we were last year, to be honest, with our suspensions. Um, so, and that also gives us pause too, right? To think of what else can we be doing? Um, PBS, you know, that has those different tiers, you know, the universal pieces, the tier two, the tier three. So um, it's been really helpful for us, I think, to see this data, to examine those next steps. Thanks for asking. Good question. And like I said, cause for us to look at our data and put it to calibrate and to make sure we're all about the same. Same um, but with calls.
I love it. I think that's amazing. I mean, we're seeing it too from my little friend. She's loving it too, so.
It's meaningful, right? And very meaningful. Talk about it at home, that's why it's more than that. Good job ticket, right?
Very good.
And kudos to the um building administrators. They're the ones really leading that work in the building. Um, we, we kicked it off organizing the di- the district IP, but they've taken it um and have been around running. So it's so fantastic to see it. All of those examples came from their teams and taking the traits that they've. Highlighted on their matrices and then creating all of the things that are tangibles that are actually happening. So without them doing that, we're just with. Virtual presentation. So, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next up, Dan.
Hello. Did everybody get the sheet?
Okay.
So the first action item tonight on the um board agenda is to approve an increase to our um preschool. Tuition program. And I just wanted to give you a couple of minutes overview. It's been at least eight years. We were going back and Cassandra was going back to try and um figure out when the last time we actually got an increase. And it's been quite a while. So um Sandra put together a comparison of our Brandon School District preschool. Um, academy, our tuition rates with those um in the area. And I did highlight, if you look at the half-day tuition, um, we are at nineteen, the other lowest is Howie at fourteen. And we've got stepping stones at forty dollars. Um, as you can see, um, we are lower than everybody, um, except for Holly. We go to the full day tuition rate, we're at thirty-four dollars currently. We are the lowest on this list. And then what's really important, if you go to the quality rating, um, we are the only five-star highest-rated program. So not only are we the lowest cost, we're um putting out a really good program for students. Um, we would have most likely come to the board about three years ago for a tuition increase. Our costs are going up. Um, we have certified teachers, benefits, everything is going up. But we were unfortunate enough, like many schools, to receive some federal funding, S R money, S R funding. That uh came into the preschool. So we were able to um hold these low rates longer than we would have otherwise. So tonight, um, we're asking for next year to increase our um daily rates fifty dollar, to fifty dollars uh for a full day. And um twenty-five dollars for a half-day. And also to implement a registration fee, a very minimal fifty-dollar registration fee. Should you look on the, on the list of um, that's standard for, for um other programs. So just want to make sure everybody um understood why we were um taking this action. And we'll look at the comparators and I think it more than justifies doing that, considering our great program. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, our action items, approval of preschool academy tuition increase. Move the Brandon Board of Education approved to increase preschool academy tuition to fifty dollars per day, twenty-five dollars per half-day. And a fifty-dollar registration fee effective starting in the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year as we that. Support. Any discussions? I have a vote.
Jane.
Yes.
Herb. Yes. Hillary.
Yes.
Jeff, yes. Rebecca.
Yes. Approval of two-year maintenance contract. Move the Brandon Board of Education to the maintenance two-years concept staff, please. Support. Any discussion? Can I get a vote?
Jane.
Yes.
Herb. Yes. Hillary.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes. Resolution for professional staff board policy update revisions. Move the Brandon Board of Education adopt the resolutions for professional staff board policy updates, revisions as presented. And.
Support.
Any discussion? Can I get a vote?
Jane.
Yes.
Herb. Yes. Hillary.
Yes.
Yep, it's Rebecca.
Yes. Resolution to change board member rotations four to six-year terms. Move the Brandon Board of Education adopt the resolution to change board member rotation four to six-year terms. Support. Any discussion? Can I get a vote?
Jane.
Yes.
Herb. Yes. Hillary.
Yes.
Jeff, yes. Rebecca.
Yes. Approval of updated twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five district calendar.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the updated twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five district calendar as presented.
Support. Yeah, go ahead.
If you don't mind, I'd just like to make a comment. Um, the rationale for the need to update the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar was a change in our Oakland County cal- calendar. Um, we had actually settled our calendar um with our negotiating team prior to that spring break being set in. Um, because of that, uh, we thought we were ahead of the game and then uh the, the calendar changed. Uh, that moved that week back. So it's a little very similar to this year. Um, being that last week in March and then coming back that first week in April in order to prepare for, say, assessments and all that jazz that come along. With April. So just wanted to put that up there as to why that's being presented to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Can I get a vote?
Jane.
Yes.
Herb. Yes. Hillary.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes. Elect Michigan Association of School Board, M A S B, region A candidate. Move the Brandon Board of Education elect Bridget McQuiston from Michigan Association School Board, region A candidate presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Can I get a vote?
Jane.
Yes.
Herb. Yes. Hillary.
Yes.
Jeff, yes. Rebecca.
Yes. Approval to issue RFP for Antenna.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve to issue RFP for Antenna as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Can I get a vote?
Jane.
Yes.
Herb. Yes. Hillary.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes. Approval of BHS freshman STEM classes overnight trip to M Dot Bridge competition. Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the high school freshman STEM classes overnight trip to Grand Rapids, Michigan for the M Dot Bridge competition. Art eleven through twelve, twenty twenty-four as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Can I get a vote?
Jane.
Yes.
Herb. Yes. Hillary.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
Yes.
Now, so we're in part. We'll go to Dan Henske. All right, um, meeting adjourned to help summer.